Welcome to FPB's Meet the Candidates. This Cable 10 series allows you, the voter, to hear directly from our candidates about issues that are important to our community. This is all leading up to the general election, where early voting starts on October 13th and goes up until Election Day on November 3rd. So for our interviews today, we accepted questions from the community via email and social media. We're going to talk about the shakeup in city government, how COVID is affecting our community, confronting social injustice here at the local level, and much more. So we've got a busy schedule, so let's jump right in. Let me introduce today's guest. It is Diane Strong, and she's running for City Commission. So hey Diane, thank you for coming. And why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Well, thank you for having me. My name is Diane Strong. I'm 45. I have two children. It's Emma and Jack. They're age 14 and 16. Came to Frankfurt three years ago in November. So I'm kind of a newcomer, but I have been visiting Frankfurt for 20 years. We needed to find a place to live that was within commuting distance to Lexington for my husband's work, and we chose Frankfurt of all places. I did research, and I thought it had the most to offer my family, more than any other place, including Lexington. We love the history. We love the government here. We love the museums in Slado and so many opportunities for my kids to learn and grow. So here we are. And I like to really get involved with my community wherever I'm at. And I decided to run as City Commissioner, or for City Commissioner, as a way to give back and hopefully add to Frankfurt and make it a better place even than it already is.
Well, what previous experience do you have of city involvement that you think has prepared you to be on the City Commission?
Well, I'm not a politician. I don't have experience sitting on a commission or anything like that, but I have worked with City Commission and Mayor in Sadieville when I created the Sadie Hill Bike Tour. I have always gotten involved wherever I lived. But yeah, I feel like as an outsider, I have a different perspective than people who have lived here their whole lives. And I've lived a lot of places. I've seen a lot of towns. I like to investigate towns and look and see what makes them tick, what makes them work, why people want to be there, what they do successfully. It's just kind of something that I enjoy doing, and I want to take that experience and knowledge and bring it back to Frankfurt and see if we can implement some of those things and make it a better place.
That's great. Well, since we last spoke, the City Commission has fired our City Manager Keith Parker. So why do you think that Frankfurt can't keep a City Manager on a long-term basis?
Well, as you know, I believe we average about 18 months for the last four City Managers. Most cities manage to keep their City Managers for eight to 10 years. And when they do leave, it's for a better position or a higher-paying position somewhere else. One of the great things about a City Manager form of government is the consistency. While we have new Commissioners and new Mayors coming in, we have that consistency across the board. And it's so disruptive to have a new one come in every 18 months, and it's very expensive. So I think what is consistent with this constant firing or leaving of our City Managers is our current Mayor. I believe that he possibly doesn't care for the City Manager form of government or doesn't work well with it, and those two aspects clash. I hate to blame it all on him. Of course, it's not going to be just him, but I think that's where we have an issue. We'll find out going forward, though.
So according to the Kentucky League of Cities, only about 5% of cities have the City Manager form of government. So what do you see as the advantages? You alluded to that earlier, but what do you see as the advantages of a City Manager plan? And do you support that? Or do you think Frankfurt should look at a Mayor Council plan?
I personally like the City Manager form of government. I've often said that it kind of blows my mind that just four Commissioners and a Mayor have so much control over the trajectory of the city. But you know, those are elected people. While they have great ideas and they all bring something to the table, none of them are necessarily trained in managing a city. So we can have all of our great ideas and point, you know, say we want this done, but we really need a professional who knows how to do those things. So I think if it's done right, it works really well. And so, yeah, I mean, and like I said, that consistency is really important. Here, we're going to come into four new Commissioners, a new Mayor, and quite possibly a new City Manager. And I believe that that is... It's an irresponsible position to be in, and it's a dangerous position to be in, and it could have definitely turned out differently, for sure.
So how do you think the City Commission and the Mayor right now should handle the search for hiring a new City Manager? Should they go ahead and move forward to try to fill that position? Or do you think they should wait and let the new city leadership choose a City Manager?
I definitely think that the new leadership needs to choose the City Manager, especially when we only have two incumbents. And you know, it's going to be a whole new group of individuals. So those, not whole new. I mean, obviously, the incumbents could get back in there, but it's going to be, you know, five individuals that should be choosing that. And you know, to put it on two that could possibly be moving forward isn't fair. Especially when, you know, the current one picked this one, and that didn't get along. So yeah, just save it for the next group, please. That is my wish.
Okay. So what should, if you were on the City Commission, what should the City Commission look for in a new City Manager?
Well, you know, I've said it before. I would consider hiring Keith back. I think that, yes, the City Manager serves at the pleasure of the Mayor and the Commission, but those are not the only people he has to work for, work with, and get along with. He needs to get along with all of the entities of our community. And Keith did that really well. He was well-liked, well-loved in many instances. He got along with, you know, if you read the support letters that came in, the Commerce, DFI, KCDC, the Police Department, I mean, just all of the pieces that make up Frankfurt, he really seemed to work well with that. Now, if they do hire somebody between now and then, and some family has moved here and moved their life here, and they're going to take on that job, obviously, I wouldn't want to fire that person or anything. And I think Keith, I actually asked Keith if it's even an option, and he said, you know, if it's available, and he would consider it. So I've got a feeling that Tommy Russell isn't... While he is more than happy to step up as the interim, I'm not sure that he's interested in doing that full-time going forward. We'll find out. I'm sure this has been an experience for him.
Oh, definitely. So obviously, this has been a hot-button issue and a troubling issue for many in our community. So if elected, what would you suggest the City Commission do to boost public confidence in city government?
Oh, wow. That's a good question. You know, we have a PR problem. We've got an optics problem. You're absolutely right. When we make the news, it's because it's embarrassing. And you know, if we continue to have the publicity, that would be wonderful. But we need to get publicity for doing the right thing, doing good things. So I would love to continue to have the publicity. And you know, when they see and read in the paper the headlines, you know, getting along, making strides, moving things forward, you know, all in agreement even, you know, these are the things that we need to build confidence. And you know, when things start going viral on social media, it should be for positive reasons.
So are you suggesting we hire a PR firm?
No, I think that we've got a great one. You know, we've got the Plant Bar. We've got a newspaper. You know, I don't think we need a PR firm at this point.
Okay. So if elected, this is a question that was submitted. If elected, will you support the appointment of a Citizens Advisory Committee tasked with identification of opportunities to improve the functionality of city government, including its overall structure and roles and responsibilities of both elected and appointed managers?
It's an interesting concept. I mean, I am all about task forces and groups in the community that come up with great ideas to improve things and to get things done and focus on things where, you know, just, you know, and then bring those ideas to the Commission. And the Mayor, you get a lot more done that way. And looking at ways to improve anything is always a good thing. So some form of that, I think, would be definitely interesting to entertain, for sure. I don't see a lot of negative coming from it, except for maybe too many cooks trying to stir the pot kind of thing.
Okay. Well, we'll move on to our next subject. As of today, Franklin County is seeing more than 500 positive cases of COVID-19. Do you feel like city leadership has taken an effectively aggressive role in helping our community slow the spread? And what more can the city do to help in this respect?
You know, I think our city's been pretty responsible. Emergency management's been taxed with that. You know, they make the call on whether, you know, our community events are going to go down or not, you know, whether we're allowed to have the concerts in the park. It seems so far to be a pretty good balance between keeping us moving and our economy moving and while still being safe. It seems like... I get the impression that they're doing a good job. When I spoke to them, you know, and boy, when the soup kitchen shut down, you know, they stepped up and took care of that. We seem to be functioning pretty well. I'm proud of Frankfurt.
Yeah. Well, beyond affecting our community's physical health, it's also affecting mental health. The CDC indicates that younger adults, racial and ethnic minorities, and essential workers have reported having experienced disproportionately worse mental health outcomes, increased substance abuse, and elevated suicidal ideation. So what efforts can be taken at the local level to address these associated mental health conditions?
You know, I've talked to the police, and I've actually talked to the paper about the fact that they don't really report overdoses in things like this. You know, by the time it leaves their hands, it's not even officially an overdose or a mental situation. And I think the more that we're aware of this stuff going on, the more we feel the need to address it. So I think awareness is really important. It's better to be warned that this is coming or that it's happening, rather than say, oh, we just lost this many people, or we could have helped that many people. With awareness comes the attention that it needs, whether it's going to be a hotline that people can call, which of course, there's hotlines out there, but to really push those numbers in people's faces and say, you know, there are things available for you. And just, you know, having... At the city level, there's only so much we can do, but you know, what funds that we do have, allotting them to deal with that. It's so important right now. I think, I hope this is just a hump we're trying to get over. And to push money towards the prevention and helping those people right now is going to be money well-spent through the future, I believe.
Okay. Well, four months ago, we discussed the looming economic crisis that would result from the pandemic. And here we are, experiencing the negative impact, for example, lower occupational taxes. So if elected, what ideas do you have to address this economic crisis? And what kind of tough decisions do you think the City Commission's going to have to make about the budget?
Well, interestingly enough, I spoke with KCDC, and our occupational tax is actually up from last year.
Okay.
It's up by a couple hundred thousand. So and the reason for that is it sounds like some of the job losses possibly were heavily tipped jobs, and those tips are not always claimed. And the jobs shift more towards manufacturing, where we see those taxes, which makes sense. That doesn't mean that we're not in an economic crisis. But yeah, I think that if possible, spending money on things like lights at a field that's not being utilized, that already has lights, $400,000, that could have been probably used in a more efficient manner or at least held off until it was clear that we were out of the crisis. I also, you know, the parcels B and C development right now as a city, as we are focusing on pushing that through, making sure it happens, getting the TIF, that is money that's going to be there. That's money that's going to come in. And not only does it give us hope as a community, as a downtown business, it's guaranteed to make our economy much better. So as a city, those are the things that we need to make sure happen. It's planning for the future and preparing and making sure that we reap the benefits, the tax benefits from all of those things. So...
Okay. Well, you mentioned KCDC. So as funding has been reduced for both Downtown Frankfurt, Inc. and KCDC, do you think this minimizes the effectiveness of their missions to support and attract businesses to our community? And how do you think the city can support these agencies?
Well, you know, I think, I like to think that when you have... I know when I'm on a tight budget, I get creative. And the best of the best are going to do that same thing. You take your money and you use it more creatively. You become more efficient. But I think that, and it was mentioned in the paper, and I know that they are playing around with the idea of kind of not combining, but getting DFI, KCDC, the Commerce, and possibly Tourism to work more closely together, eliminate some of the redundancies, whether it be, you know, the same copying machine or somebody to answer the phones, but work together as more of a force. And I love this idea because they would work individually on each project that they want to happen. But when it comes to getting those things done, they have the whole umbrella to help back them up and make those things happen. So you're really, you're doing a lot more with a lot less money. So it's efficient, and I think it's a great idea. I'm hoping that that pushes forward.
Okay. Well, the Mayor and the City Commission have taken a hit lately as folks are questioning their transparency on issues and processes. So as a City Commissioner, what would you do to ensure the improvement of transparency to your constituents?
Be transparent. I think we can learn a lot from City Commissioner Waldridge. She said that she was going to run on transparency and honesty, and she's done just that. She's set an example of what it takes to make the community aware of what's going on. You know, it's so important that each decision that's made is not because we're too lazy to do the research or too lazy to make the right decision. And so, yeah, I... My platform is very, very clear. And if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. And I want to make sure you know who I am and how I'm going to vote going forward. There won't be any surprises. You know what I mean? So, yeah, it's, we need to continue to be transparent. And I love that. I love that the city is aware now. And it's sad that it took some shenanigans, I guess, to make us all a little more hyper-aware of what's going on. But I think it's important. Now it's on the forefront. People can take an active role in watching and paying attention. And you know, it'll hopefully be good reality TV.
We'll move to the next subject. This summer, after the deaths of Breonna Taylor and George Floyd, our country saw a rising movement in the cause for social justice. So my question to you is, do Black Lives Matter?
Oh, my gosh, yes. Yes. 100%. Is that the only?
I'll move on. If you had, I was going to give you...
No, no. This has been, you know, this has been huge. This has been... It's been amazing to go through this experience. It's a, oh, it's been... As a person who believed I was the least racist person on the planet, I discovered that even those of us who try and think that we know are still, you know, not right. And we have a lot to learn and a lot to grow. So this has been, this has been pretty amazing. I could go on this topic for a long time. But I think that, I will say, I think Frankfurt is... I'm very proud of Frankfurt. I'm proud of our Police Department. I think that we are doing things right. I've spoke to community members that I feel can give me feedback to understand. You know, it's one thing for me as a white woman to say, yeah, things are great here, but I don't know. So I have reached out and I've made contact because I want to make sure that Frankfurt is doing things right and going in the right direction. And the feedback that I got was very, very promising. Frankfurt Police Department has, you know, they've been enacting change far before any of the most recent stuff. This has been something that's been going on for years. I did hear some horrific things that happened a few decades ago, but that's changing, and it's changing for the better. And we're heading in the right direction. As far as our Police Department goes, I'm there... I've spoken with Chief Adams. He's very available for people to call and talk to. I like what I hear. You know, they're doing the, they've got the cameras. They're using them. He's doing the training. He actually required the de-escalation training for all of his guys, when he didn't have to. It's usually the training is optional. I will say, it costs money to do that kind of training. And he would love to see a social worker on the police force, which also costs money. So I would consider, you know, increasing the budget for the Police Department to make us better. So there's that.
Well, you answered my next questions. So good on you.
Again, I'm sure I can come up with some more.
That's great. Also, in the early summer, a group of young activists sponsored a march up Capitol Avenue to support the movement. So what can city leaders do to encourage more young people to become more civically engaged?
That's a great question. I joined in that march. I was really proud of the young people who put it on. They did it really well. It was well-received, well-attended. And you know, there was no damage or anything done. It just said so much about Frankfurt. You know, I... Every single one of us need to reach out to these young people that show that spark of wanting to get involved and just encourage them. You know, it's, I've, my daughter is like that. You know, and I push her and try to encourage her. But you know, every time you see just that little spark of interest, just, you know, and it shouldn't just be up to the city. It should be up to every single one of us to encourage these kids, you know. Just, you know, they can run for City Commission. You know, they can do these things. They can, they can take part in the community. And I don't think that they're aware of that. They can sit on boards. They can, you know... There's so many opportunities out there. And just because they're only 18, or they're only 22, or they've never done it before, they need to be invited onto boards? I think that's another really important thing. Maybe, I know, so my daughter sits on Woods and Waters. You know, she was invited to that board. Maybe every board that the city has should also have a team representative. That wouldn't be such a bad idea.
Well, speaking of boards, if elected, how would you involve more business leaders in board appointments and other decision-making processes in our community?
Well, you appoint them to the boards and invite them to the meetings. And when they speak, you listen. That's the important part. You know, that, that's my really big, important thing of my platform is us as a city needs to listen to our business owners, our investors, and our developers. And we can't say, you're whining. We need to say, that's interesting. And I've said this before, the local, a local group of investors and developers got together and created what they titled "A List of Complaints." And I found that to be unfortunate. I think it should have been titled "A List of Opportunities for Frankfurt to Do Better and Grow." That's what the title should have been. But the city basically brushed it under the rug. They didn't see it as an opportunity for us to grow. We need to, we need to look at our surrounding communities that are doing really well and notice what they do differently and adopt that practice here. We need to listen to the complaints. We need to listen to what we can do better and get better and grow. So yes, that's, that's a big deal.
What can city leadership do to foster a more partnering relationship with Kentucky State University? And why would that be important?
What can we do? Well, I've been trying to reach out to a couple of them today even because I get this question all the time since, you know, when we first moved here, that I was like, why aren't they more involved? Why can't we work together? And so I'm constantly trying to get feedback from different individuals to figure out what the problem is. There seems to be some sort of miscommunication. And like with so many things, we need to come together and talk and work together. Now, they do have entities there that that's what their job is, to work with the city. And do we have that in the city? Do we have, you know, someone who's appointed to working with KSU? If we don't, we need it. And we need to get that communication open. And why would we want to? Because we have a university here in Frankfurt. We should take advantage of that. We have got a young population of smart college individuals that could be coming and, you know, creating a bigger, better Frankfurt, spending their money downtown, hanging out. And you know, they could be hired by our downtown. They could be hired by the city, you know. But instead, these guys, these gals, they take their degree and they, you know, they leave. And so, you know, we need to, we want them to fall in love with Frankfurt so they'll stay, you know. So yeah, there's tons of opportunities. And I'm, you know, whether I get elected or not, I'm going to get to the bottom of it, try to make some of those things happen.
Okay. Would you support the expeditious completion of the Thoroughbred Trail, which is the one that goes to Kentucky State University from downtown?
Yes, 100%. Not just because I am on walk-by Frankfurt, but because if there's one thing this pandemic has made clear, it's that people love being outside. They love being on trails. And it's ignited a whole rush of outdoor activities, which I think is wonderful for the country. I think it's wonderful for the environment. But when you have trails, they will get used. Our city will never regret creating a trail. I can almost guarantee you that, unless something horribly wrong goes wrong with that trail and there's a lawsuit. But I mean, it's absolutely, that trail's been in the making for, I believe, almost a decade. It's ridiculous that it's taken this long. So yeah, to speed up the process now, I'm good with that. You know, being outside and moving and getting exercise is good for your health. And it saves everybody money in the long run. And also, that trail leads to KSU. So that's a way for those guys to come down to the city and get involved. And we can go up to KSU and get involved. So it's all good from every aspect.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. We're running short on time now, so I'm going to turn it over to you and let you address the viewers and let them know why you're the best candidate for City Commission.
Okay. Well, I, like I said before, whether or not I'm the best candidate, I don't know. Well, um, I, like I said before, whether or not I'm the best candidate, I don't know, but I will guarantee I will be a good asset to that group of individuals. I think I have a lot to bring. Um, I, I represent, uh, developers, investors and good thoughtful growth in Frankfurt. Um, I believe that Frankfurt has a ton of stuff to offer and, um, it's a shame that we don't take advantage of what assets that we do have. Um, I, I don't, I, I'm running a green campaign. I don't have yard signs, um, so I do encourage as much word of mouth as possible. I don't believe that you need to be rich to run for office and I'm, I'm, I'm insistent on proving that by not spending a lot of money on my campaign. Um, I believe that voters need to do their research, investigate their candidates and vote accordingly. And if that were the case, we don't need to have gigantic billboards or signs in every law and, on every lawn and, um, add to the landfill at the end of the election. So, so there's that. But, um, but yes, I do ask for your vote. If I do get elected, I promise to work for Frankfurt and do as I've said I'm going to do. Um, so there you go.
Okay. Well, if folks want to learn more about you or about what you stand for, is there anywhere that can get more information about you?
I have a website. Um, it's DianeStrong.com and I have a Facebook page. It's, um, it's, uh, FrankfurtStrong, Diane Strong for City Commission. Uh, you can go to me on Facebook and I, you know, Diane Strong and follow me there. I always double post my personal and the commission page. You can call me, you can email me. My email is DianeStrong@Ymail.com and my phone number, should I get my phone number? My phone's on my Facebook page and it's on the website.
Okay. Got it covered. Well, thank you so much for, for taking time to be with us today. Uh, I know I appreciate it. I know our viewers appreciate it and, uh, we wish you the best of luck.
All right. Thank you so much.
Sure. And to our viewers, I want to say thank you for watching because it is so important to get informed before you mail in your ballot or go vote early. So, uh, get informed, voice your choice and that's all for today. We'll see you next time on Meet the Candidates.